That's me and you, I think. Good evening. It's 6:30 on Monday, October the 24th, 2022, and I now call the Witten Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mrs. Coon?
Present.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here. All of our work follows the SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive, and they follow the student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement goals. Our next item on the agenda is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor, and I'm going to take these to the podium.
All right. Thank you, President Johnson and board members. So our first recipient, the Kiwanis Character's Key Award for Responsibility is Maybelin Gomez. Come on up. So this was written by her principal, Ms. Elizabeth Stiles. Maybelin demonstrates responsibility in many ways, responsibility with how she handles her materials. She brings her backpack folder and water bottle to school every day. When at school, she takes the time to follow the routines of these materials, as well as the materials in the classroom. She is not only responsible with the materials, but takes the time to help others be responsible with theirs as well. She will explain concepts like you need to put your lid on your glue stick so it does not dry out. She models how to do things by putting papers in a folder so the folder shuts correctly, and also helps translate what to do with materials to her peers who may not fully understand the directions in English. Maybelin is also responsible for her learning. She actively participates in whole group activities. She consistently completes and turns in her homework. She follows the classroom's rule of the first work then play. Wow, somebody needs that. First work then play, okay. And she has a growth mindset when it comes to learning new concepts. Maybelin is also responsible for doing activities independently, like centers, playing at recess, and going to the bathroom. She's also responsible. So she is so responsible, she is often picked to do helper jobs, such as walking another student to the nurse, getting and turning in the walkie-talkie, and giving materials to another teacher. Maybelin is also one of the most responsible students I've ever met, and I love having her. Wow. So who did you bring here with you tonight? Did someone come with you, or you came alone? Come on up. We're going to get a nice picture with you.
Should I come out a little bit? You want to come out?
Come on, Grandma.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Come on. Now, I know when we send these letters out to you, we send a letter telling you there's going to be a photograph. Absolutely fantastic.
Thank you.
Wow. Beautiful. Got to remember that glue stick. Our next person is the Kiwanis Character's Key for Respect, Mr. Tony Coleman. Where is he? Got nervous and ran out on us? Okay, we'll come back. We'll come back. The next person is Nadia Ali. Nadia here? Okay, that's all right. We'll catch up with her. And I'd like to. We've got a real special guest in the audience, and that is Mr. Glenn Gibson. Mr. Gibson, can you come on up? Mr. Glenn Gibson is a bus driver. The Witten Woods Board of Education would like to recognize Mr. Gibson as a longtime community member and veteran who served during the Korean and Vietnam Wars. We should applaud that, folks. He was honorably discharged as a staff sergeant and was honored with other veterans in Freedom Honor Flight on September 20th. That's amazing. And the board thanks Mr. Gibson for his service to our nation. And we have a rule here. If you're smaller than the podium, you don't have to say anything. But if you're taller, a few words.
I appreciate this very much. It's been my honor for the last, well, for 23 years, being involved with Forest Park and Witten Woods. Forest Park and Witten Woods is a soccer club for 17 years. In the last six years, driving a bus for Witten Woods. That has been a real joy for me. And I look forward to the future. I plan on staying here as long as I can, or as long as I'll have me. But I do appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Knowing that there is a bus driver shortage in the state of Ohio, the next 20 years would be fine for me. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Hey, can we get the whole board to get a picture with him, please?
Oh, yes, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sent a message. That's why I went to get my phone, so we didn't do her.
So is Mr. Tony Coleman here now?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Coleman. Come on up, sir. I'm going to read a little bit about you, okay? If I get to anything that's not true, you tell me, okay? All right. So Terry Daniel, first grade teacher writes, "Tony is always willing to help others and makes sure to ask how our day is going." There's something in here that I'm going to read. When they told me he did this, I need this kid at central office. I'll tell you why in a minute. "He follows directions and then the PBI's expectations without having to be reminded. He listens when spoken to and waits for his turn." Michelle Plummer, Principal Witten Woods Primary School, writes, "Tony and I were walking down the hallway in the same direction, but not going to the same place. When we made eye contact, I greeted him by saying hello. After resounding, he asked, 'How is your day going?'" Oh, I need that. I need that. So every week, I want you to just walk through the hallways in my office and just ask me how my day is going, okay? All right. "I was so amazed by his conversation skills and etiquette. Students are selected for the Kiwanis Character's Key Respect Award based on the following description. Respect means to actively pursue behavior toward others that promotes awareness and understanding that all human beings have worth being considerate of the rights of others and showing regard for public and private properties." So the character key is the Character's Key Respect is Mr. Tony Coleman, first grader. So Mr. Coleman, hold on. Who did you bring tonight? Who's here with you? Okay, we're going to bring them up. Yeah, we're going to bring Mr. McMillan up.
Yeah, come in front. Yeah, it's too squished back there.
You're on time. And then Mr. McMillan is going to tell a little bit about why you do what you do, why the Kiwanis does. So Mr. McMillan, a little bit, why you tell why the Kiwanis, why do you do what you do? At the mic, please.
This is what happens when the president can't make it to the club.
Whoops.
That was a pleasure that I enjoyed some years ago. But the awards, to me, after all you hear in the newspapers and read about what's going on, to see what these kids do, really kind of restores your faith a little bit in the younger generation. And Kiwanis is certainly proud to recognize what those kids do.
Very good. And we had an opportunity to have Maybelin come in, but you were on time. We were just early, okay? So what we're going to do is bring Maybelin and her parents and grandparents back up for a picture. Because there's a special gift on the back of that certificate. So come back up for the picture.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. One of the real pleasures of Kiwanis is doing.
So did Nadia come in?
Yes.
Okay, we'll catch you next month.
Okay, our other recipient is a...
All right, our next recipient. I was at the football game, and I noticed Ms. Howler doing some real sophisticated work. I didn't know if she was doing some intel for us just to make sure we were safe, but she let me know that she was doing something that promotes our whole thing about academics, scholastics, and these other things that help young people, you know, figure out, this may be something I want to do in the future. So she's going to do a quick demo and kind of show us why she comes to football games. It's not just for the scores. It's not just for the cheerleaders. Yeah, but it's for some other integral things that happen. And one of the things that Ms. Howler is going to do is get some of our students to be involved in this. This could be a career opportunity. So there you go.
Okay. So, good evening. So my name is Jennifer Howler, and I'm the Instructional Technology Coach at North Campus. Been there for quite a while now. So last year, we started a club called the Warrior Broadcasting Crew. And we started it late, like in February, March, and we kind of really started to take off this year. And the idea behind it was to, I mean, one, capitalize on the great tradition of sports in Witten Woods, but also then capture the other things that are going on in the school. And so this is a club, so the students come during Warrior Bell, which is during the day, so we have about half an hour every day. And we're learning a bunch of different things. And so the two things that I kind of wanted to focus on that we've taken off with, our first one is that we do have a Twitter feed, and we live tweet from the games. And so that's what Mr. Smith saw us doing. So this is just an example. So this is our Twitter, which you all should follow, WWHS Broadcast. And so our students put all this together. And so we go through, and like I said, we live tweet from the game. So, you know, in years past, if I haven't been able to come to a game, and especially during COVID, was when a lot, when we couldn't attend the games, how do we know what's going on? And so we're kind of teaching our students how to do that, which will eventually lead to broadcasting, right? A lot of them don't know football real well right now, so we're kind of learning. But we tweet from the game. We do have, and I just saw the one, but we will put, they're learning how to do graphics. So some of the students who don't necessarily want to tweet, they don't want to be in front of camera. So they're learning to do graphics with one of our graphic programs, very simple, that we use in the school and everything. So we do one at the beginning of the game, one at halftime, and one at the end of the game. So it was backwards, right? So this was, so we always announce that it's game day before game. And during the school day, we've been starting by interviewing either a coach and/or player during the day. Started at a kind of kickoff. So we're learning how to get those interview skills as well. Right, yeah, I know, you're kissing the height difference. Right, so that's Jordan. She's on the, we call it the WBC, Warrior Broadcasting Crew, and she's interviewing Ben George, the quarterback of the football team. And so we try and take a picture and recognize those who do. We also have two girls who are really wanting to get into photography. And so they're taking pictures of the games as well. And so we're teaching them about how to do that and be on the sidelines and all of that. So we're small but mighty right now. We have eight students that are consistent. But I tell you what, when we walk up to interview, find our student, a player to interview now, it's like we're famous. We are mobbed. Ms. Howler, Ms. Howler, when are you going to interview me? When are you going to interview me? Can I get interviewed now?
You know, I was thinking that same thing. That's okay.
Well, you know, Trey Cornus.
That's all right.
Well, Trey Cornus asked me, he said, "Why don't I get an interview?" And I said, "Well, because we had interviewed the center, Jalen Goody." And I said, "We got to interview him first because he opens up the hole for you."
Oh, he does. He does.
He's the reason you get all your yards.
He is the reason.
And he said, "You're right, Ms. Howler. You get me next time." So we have, so we've done that. And so that's where we were kind of starting. And we're starting here because this is something we can take off with. We've also then been retweeting things that the district puts out. We also want to focus on our music program, right, and sort of get those involved. We're teaching them about your audience, though. Because Twitter is going to be your older people, right? It just is, Twitter or Facebook. But Twitter is also for your athletes. That's where they get recruited. It's where the coaches see them. So we have total support from our coaching staff and our players. Like I said, the players all follow us, and they retweet things that we put out, and so we retweet them as well. But if we want to hit the rest of the student body, where do we need to go?
TikTok.
Exactly. So we just started. We just started our TikTok channel. Can I play one real quick?
Is it of me?
No.
Sure.
Okay. I got to turn my music back on that you guys had me. What I got for that. So this was our first one. It's kind of a, and if you're not a fan of TikTok or if you're not on TikTok, this is one of the trends, the style that, and this was totally student-created. Pictures, edited, all of that. So that was one. And then we started, this we just started just the other week. Late night, one of the late night shows. They would go around and ask people just random questions. So we started that. And then we're trying to just get other people, other students involved and seen on these things, right?
And so, asking people what their favorite candy is.
I won't make you watch the whole thing, but she just went around asking teachers and students what their favorite candy is. And just like, just stop them and just ask, and then walk away. Some people talk too much, but. But that's what we're going to do. So we're just going to randomly pick questions and then walk around and kind of get them. We've got a lot of other ideas. We are going to partner with Waycross Media. We just had a meeting with them. So we've got a couple of ideas that we're going to roll with, maybe some podcasting, and then helping Tony with some video production. So just exposing them to a bunch of different ideas. And if I want to be an athlete, what's my fallback plan? And what else can I learn? What other areas can I go into? And I just have to give a shout out to my nephew. He's the one who kind of started me with all of this. He did this at his high school, and he's now at Indiana University doing sports broadcasting, and just announced that he'll be covering the girls' basketball games.
There you go.
So, but he found his passion, and that's what I want to help these students do as well.
So it's not just the TikTok and the broadcasting. It's the enthusiastic teacher that helps make this thing go. So that's the exciting part. And I think that people forget that we think it's easy, but when you have that enthusiasm and young people want to participate and do what you've asked them to do with integrity, that's what makes the difference. So thank you.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I mean, I love what I do here.
Yes. I think whatever. The other part is, you know, when we're doing these broadcasts and we're winning, that just makes it that much more exciting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It makes it really hard for the student who's tweeting, though, that when you hit a touchdown and you're reporting that, and then you're doing the kickoff, and there's then a fumble, and then they're running it back, and so like, they can't keep up. With the turnovers, not the scores. So they've got to slow down a little bit.
Yeah, they do. Hey, Mr. Denny, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Plummer, Dr. Martin, Dr. Ragland, let's get in a picture where, so just shows that, you know, nothing but love. Ms. Bort?
She's got another follower, thank you.
Who else is back here? Ms. Bray? Get our whole TikTok family in here. Board members, board members, get in there. Get in there. Get everybody in there. Get everybody in there. Board members, get in there. Let's go. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Yeah, come on. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be good. Get your steps in. Ms. Howler?
Yes, sir.
The reason I wanted all these people to come up, I want you to do some TikTok with all that group. Make it interesting, yeah. Do something, do something fun. Yeah. Always a motive. Because she might do something that's difficult. So now.
Well, I want to know when I'm going to get you an eye.
Well. We're working on that.
And you allow me to do all of this, so I'm going to picture you?
Ah, yeah.
Yes, I can.
It's not going to be on TikTok. Drew won't get it. She won't get with me. But you allow me to be here, so I appreciate that.
You going to TikTok that, Courtney? Okay, tweet it.
That's it.
Oh, thank you.
We do have another recognition, Ms. Kozlowski. She couldn't make it tonight, but when she comes, we'll carry it over until next month, okay? All right, very good.
One lady is right here for you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, that's it, huh?
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you to Superintendent Smith, and congratulations, and special thank you to all our students, teachers, and administrators for the wonderful, and all of our wonderful partners for your contribution to our district. I did have, oh, I went to get my phone. I had a message from Mrs. Kaz that she had sent to me because she said she wasn't going to be here. So since she sent this message, I will go ahead and read it. She says, "I won't be able to make it to the meeting tonight, but please let them know how much I appreciate the recognition and what a pleasure it is and a privilege it has been to be the theater director for over 20 years. I consider it a good fortune to have inherited this amazing program and have done my best to uphold its high standards and the level of excellence. Thank you again." So I just wanted to read that because she did send me that text. Okay. So again, I want to just say thank you, and I think I do speak for the entire board when I say that we are very proud of all of your accomplishments, young people, and our teachers and administrators, and we appreciate the service that you do to our district. Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is a recess for a five-minute break. So let's go ahead and take that five-minute break. All right, we're back in session. And the next item on the agenda is public comments. And I do have one public comment. Mr. Bill Spellman, you may take the podium, please. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
So I'll start when you start.
Okay. Thank you, Board and Superintendent Smith. I came and spoke to the Board two or three times last fall. My wife and I were looking at selling our house, and I checked into the schools. At the time, and this was based on the public school review profiles, at the time, our math proficiency was 13%. Our language arts proficiency was 41%. The state was 63 and 64. One Board member told me that I was passing out misinformation when the Board can give comments. So at the November 2021, I believe it was, the superintendent asked Dr. Adrian Martin and two others to present the Witten Woods achievements, and I have copies of those. But in language arts, our low score was 22.3, and that was in the eighth grade. And our high score was 46.1 in the fifth grade. And in math, our low score was 6.5 in the seventh grade and 37.1 in the fourth grade. The other side of this is there are lots of success stories. We heard some of them tonight, and we can't, nobody can dispute that there's success stories. But there's also the other side. And I guess I'm hoping that those scores that were reported last year at the November 21 meeting were significantly a result of two years of working at home. And so since then, hopefully, they've improved. So I'm hoping that the updated scores will be presented at the November 2022 meeting so the community can know where the improvements are and what we can do. There are success stories, but there's areas that need help. And I don't think anybody on the Board or the superintendent would go, "Mr. Spellman, you're crazy." It's reality. So hopefully, we'll see those at the November meeting, and then we'll know where we're at.
Yeah, you know, we're actually going to take a deeper dive, more so than what happens at a regular Board meeting. So you're invited, as well as the public, to come to the Student Achievement Committee meeting.
Okay.
And that will be at?
On October 26th, 4:30 to 5:30 at the Community Building Room 105.
Yes.
26th of October?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Oh, and four to six?
4:30 to 5:30.
Okay. And what room?
105.
Because I went to the high school tonight, and it's like, there's no one here.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
One other question. Mr. Spellman, you started out talking about the sale of your house. Can you enlighten me about?
Yeah, we were just looking at moving. Our daughter lives in Madeira. She has three kids. So we were looking at moving closer to her. And then we decided with what we have here and what we could get there, that was a silly choice.
Absolutely.
So then it's like, a lot of my home value is determined by how good the schools are, or what, you know, and that's why I'm here. So I don't have any kids in the school. We homeschooled our kids up through 10th grade and then sent them to a private school. But with, we're moving in the direction of school choice, and that's going to be a difficult thing when these kind of scores are the... It's just going to be a difficult situation.
Thank you, Mr. Spellman. We appreciate you coming to share your thoughts. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is comments from the Witten Woods Teachers Association. Do we have a representative from the Witten Woods Teachers Association tonight? Seeing that we do not, we'll move on to the next item, which is 5.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OC, and I see our representative approaching the podium as I speak.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Smith, community members, administrative staff, OC members. We have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for coming anyway and sitting with us through our meeting. We appreciate that. Thank you for your presence. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. And Board, there are two sets of minutes that need to be approved tonight, and we're going to call for them separately. So the first set of minutes for September 26, 2022, I will entertain a motion at this time to approve those minutes for the regular Board meeting for September 26, 2022.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular minutes for the meeting of September 26.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
I abstain. So it passes three to one abstention. But now I'll entertain a motion for the second set of minutes, which was October the tenth, twenty-twenty-two, I'll have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the ten-ten regular meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Abstaining.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes one abstention and three pass vote. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is seven point oh one, which is the treasurer's report for the financial statements for September twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, through the, for the month of September, we had, through this month of September for the general fund, we had year-to-date revenues right at nineteen million, with month-to-date revenues at three point two million, most of which was our state foundation, and we also got our wholestead and rollback from the state of Ohio. Our year-to-date expenditures in the general fund are at twelve and a half million, and we're currently running right around two point seven percent under budget, or approximately one point five million. Also, on page five, you have a list of all the funds and their current balance, and the balance in all funds is approximately thirty-seven million. And that's basically a summary of the reports that you have before you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of September twenty-twenty-two be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is eight point oh one, which is the treasurer's recommendation for the investments for twenty, September twenty-twenty-two. Back to you, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, for the month of September, we had approximately thirty-seven million invested, of which we earned sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Most of that was within the general fund of fifty thousand five hundred and sixty-eight, and our building fund of ten thousand four hundred and eight. As you know, we've liquidated a lot, all of our general fund, but as you know, interest rates are now starting to rise, so we're going to see a little bit of growth on our cash reserves, which are at Star Ohio, and Star Ohio has gone from point oh two during the pandemic to currently, it's two point nine five. So, we're seeing a little bit of return on cash, like your savings account, cash equivalents, not investments per se. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'm, I make a motion to accept the investment report as presented for September twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eight point oh two, which is the transfer of funds. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm asking the board for permission to transfer forty-two thousand dollars. We traditionally, for the last three years, have transferred forty thousand dollars to support our student athletic program. This is to help bring them back from when we weren't in a league. This probably will not have to be as high as we go forward. Obviously, your athletic program is prospering right now, but we still would like to have the board support it by forty thousand dollars this year. Also, I'm asking for a thousand dollars for the high school yearbook and a thousand dollars for middle school orchestra. These two accounts have been negative since the start of the pan, pandemic, and we need to bring them up to a cash, you know, up without a negative balance, and it's due to, a large part due to the pandemic and a change in leadership on those, on those clubs.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
So I'm requesting a total of forty-two thousand from the general fund to basically your athletic and your student activity program.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of forty-two thousand from the general fund to the three accounts mentioned, the high school athletics, forty thousand, a thousand high school yearbook, and a thousand to the middle school orchestra.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions or discussion?
I, I do have a question on the athletics that covers what kind of programs, it's not just, it's not one sport, it would encompass?
It's all sports.
Okay.
It's all sports, it helps support all the officials, the trainers, the, the supplies. General fund is still buying when they have a large, a large purchase of uniforms or helmets, which could be ten thousand dollars and things like that, but this helps support the incidentals, you know, you have all your officials, you have, you know, many.
I think the piece that Mr. Seymour mentioned about the league, since we weren't in the league for several years, it was very costly to play all these teams out of town, you couldn't take a yellow bus, you had to take them over to coach, students had to stay in hotels, and when people came in to play us, sometimes we had to put them up. So it was, it was, it was costly all the way through. One of the things that we did with the study, it takes about five or six years to recover from a situation like that, but I understand your point, Ms. Coon, does this encompass other things, not just a sport?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, and, and it covers the whole year, as far as the calendar?
It's, it's all year, all sports, all, all athletic programs.
I just wanted to just touch base on it, just so everyone.
And that's good to know, that's good for the public to know.
It's not just football, it's basketball, it's boys' basketball, girls' basketball, hockey, rowing, it's all the extracurricular activities.
Even though we talk about the revenue sports, even if we were in a league, there are some sports that don't make any revenue at all.
Yeah, baseball, you can't.
And the students still need to be outfitted appropriately, you know, parents want to see their kids look their best, so that's part of our responsibility.
You basically only have a couple sports that are self-sufficient, and you have to support the entire athletic program.
Definitely.
If that makes sense.
No, I, that's why I wanted to make sure that everyone kind of understood what that fund was going for.
I do believe Ohio State football pays for everything in the whole city of Columbus.
And then, yearbook and then orchestra, could you just give us a little bit more information, I know you said it was negative for the last couple of years, but what, what kind of costs, like for orchestra, would it cover for middle school?
What, the extras that they do outside of the classroom, for extra things like maybe a field trip, or he wants to do something beyond what is in the classroom, or she.
No, those are important, because I wanted to make sure that those, that our students have those experiences as well, so that's good.
And string instruments are very hard to maintain.
That was, I would think, would be costly.
Very hard to maintain, yes.
So, very good, okay, well, thank you.
It's just that those funds were, fell short a couple of years ago, and we've got to bring them back up.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you very much for the clarification and for your questions, Mrs. Coon.
Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is eight point zero three, which is the resolution requesting authority to file a modified tax budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, basically, this is just a resolution, and the board is giving me permission to file our five-year forecast with our budget down to the Hamilton County Auditor. What the budget process for is it says, it proves that you need the taxes that are levied, you need them to run the district, and what's better to support that than a five-year forecast? So, the Hamilton County Auditor asks that I get the board's permission to file the five-year forecast in lieu of the Hamilton County Budget Form, just for the general fund. I filed a request for all the other taxing funds, permanent improvement and our debt service fund, but for the general fund, instead of their prescribed form, I'm allowed to submit the five-year forecast. And that's done in January. It'll come to you at the organizational meeting, and the five-year forecast will be coming to you at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions for discussion?
Just one question, you said we'll get it in January, so the fiscal year runs calendar year fiscal, or is it?
Budget years on the tax budget, that's why it says twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Okay, I just.
If that makes sense. Your ta, your, your tax budget runs January to January, but our budget runs July, June to July.
That's why I just wanted to clarify that, okay.
All right, very good, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item, thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Sure, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is nine point oh one, which is the reports of the superintendent and school reports, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, there will be a comprehensive SAC-TAC report on Wednesday during that committee meeting, and it starts at five o'clock?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, all right, four-thirty. So they'll take a deeper dive into the report card, the new report card, what it means, and I do believe that Ms. Coon has some information about the district and every other district being held harmless, for this particular report card, you won't get a grade or a score until next year. The other thing is, report cards are out, and I wanted the, the public to make sure they, they receive their students' report cards, if they're good grades, keep the grades up, if the kids are struggling, let the teachers know, because they will give you the support and help that you need, so that you don't have to struggle for the entire school year. And then the final one is, having a conversation with Ms. Coon earlier, we have a lot of different supplementals, and some of these supplementals, some people understand them, sometimes they don't. So what we're going to do each month is bring a group of people to let them explain their supplementals, how they work, and how they support young people. The supplementals, we have a one-hundred-and-twelve supplementals in our school district, and by far, it really beats a lot of school districts and a lot of school systems, because that means that we're offering young people the opportunity to participate in a variety of activities that keeps them connected to school. And what parents want to know is, how's, how's my child doing academically, but how are they performing, you know, outside with their social groups? So, we'll bring a few people in each month, like we did for Ms. Howler, and let them just kind of give an overview, this is what this supplemental does, some of them explain themselves, like golf, baseball, track, but there are others that are support groups and groups for young people, but I think that we could probably get more young people to be involved with them if they understand why they, the purpose and, and what they do. So each month, we'll come back and talk about them, the goal is to get through a hundred and twelve of them before the end of the school year, okay? Maybe about three or four people at a time.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe more than one presentation.
Yeah, but they'll be brief, because it'll just be, this is why I decide, and it's not just, like, like you heard Ms. Howler's testimony, it's not because I'm good at it, it's because I like it, because it helps children, and I think that's the other part. And plus, you need to see the faces of the people that are in front of young people every day, why young people should be in this particular club or activity, we may be recommending people for it, and a parent might say, "Hey, my child is not, they don't like the sports aspect as much, what other clubs and activities could they be part of?" So this is an opportunity to showcase it, and not just talk about the number, but the incentives to go along with it, okay? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is nine point oh two, which is the facilities update, and Mr. Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs, along with Mr. Smith, will present this agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, good evening, Board, and good evening, everyone, hope you're doing well. So I get to give a, a very eagerly anticipated update, we are now, as of last week, we just reached substantial completion with the two demolition projects, so that's the property at Kingsbury, the former Winton Forest slash elementary school facility, and the former Lakeside slash primary south facility located at eight-two-five Lakewood. So, there's just a few punch list items to take care of, and then those will actually reach not only substantial completion, but full completion, so that's good news, we're finally, finally there. In other news, we have the other significant facility work going on at the intermediate school, the former intermediate school, the future early childhood center, and we are seeing demolition proceed really nicely, I don't know if you've had a chance to roll past the property at all, but they're actually starting to work on the installation phase for the windows, there's no windows yet, those have been ordered, but they've started to cut openings for the windows, and you can see they've got embraced, and they've taken the, the masonry brick away, but it's the CMU blocks, the masonry unit behind are still in place, so they'll cut those out when the windows arrive, and then we'll be able to see the new windows, so it's going to be a lot more daylighting in that building, which is great for kids and great for staff, and great for productivity, and also, energy efficiency as well, so. We've come a long way in building materials, obviously, since the building was built, so that'll be a nice improvement for the facility. They are about seventy percent done with the demolition portion, and that's all interior, it's not anything exterior, obviously, we're not tearing any part of the building apart, but inside, they've removed all of the ceiling grid and tile, that's a hundred percent done, the hydronic piping for the boiler system's about ninety percent removed, so they're really making good progress, any of the plaster ceilings have been removed, and they are working on some of the other pieces of the boiler and the heating system that have to be removed to make way for the new system to come in, so. We've seen a lot of good progress over there, and we're looking forward to finishing the demolition phase and moving into the installation phase and the renovation portion, hopefully soon.
Very good.
Very good, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. We always, we always appreciate hearing the updates for what's going on, how, how we're progressing along.
Within budget?
Within budget, yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, okay, all right.
You'll excuse my coffee. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh one, which is Superintendent's recommendation for the athletic, athletic events pay schedule effective ten-one, twenty-twenty-two, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
All right, Board, I hope you have your schedules in front of you, the only change on this schedule was ticket sales for football. That dollar amount used to be forty dollars per event, it's sixty now, and the difference in the price is because of the long lines and all the hours that they spend, it's a little bit more than a forty-dollar event kind of deal. Covering tickets and sales for football is, is different than other, the other sports, and the hours that the, the people were putting in, it was starting to be like a four-thirty to like nine-thirty, something strange, even though we get to the fourth quarter, people still want to buy tickets, we say sell them tickets if they want to buy tickets, and I think it extended their time, where you had the ladies in the booths for long periods of time, and we just thought that it was more reasonable, it's different than being inside at a basketball game or coming to a soccer game, you don't have a line all the way back to concession, so this was the only change that happened in the athletic events to pay schedule. The other ones are the same.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the athletic events pay schedule as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, are there any questions for discussion?
I do have a question, Superintendent, I emailed it earlier, I'm just trying to look at the difference in pay, and I'm sure it's because of ticket sales between high school, so for the site manager and the high school and the site manager in the middle school, is it because of the, the ticket sales? Okay.
Yeah, the other thing that we found out is when we did the research, this pay is consistent with the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and someone brought it to our attention, it says, the Ohio High School Athletic Association says here the fees that they charge for an event, and ours are subsequently lower, so we want to be within the scope.
And do we have the opportunity for electronic purchasing of tickets too as well?
Yes, we do, yeah, we do, and we encourage that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh two, which is the addendum to the administrative personnel's salary schedule, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, if you would turn your attention to number eight, that's the most, that's the part, that's the, the change in this particular revision, the exempt salary schedule, we wanted to make sure that our exempt employees, when they made a decision to go back and get more education, we wanted to be able to reimburse them, because we're trying to grow our own system within our system. So we have students, people who are paraprofessionals, who decided, "I think I want to be a teacher," and we want to be able to help encourage that, now, we can't incur the entire cost, but it's going to be ten thousand dollars that's distributed between that whole en, entire group, and people have been taking advantage of it. Again, the best way to grow your own is to grow your own, and we've been trying to do it, we've done it with teachers, and we wanted to make sure we were doing it across the board fairly with other employees. So the only change is, the only addition is number eight on your sheet, the other ones are the same.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order. Board, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the addendum to the administrative personnel salary schedule as presented effective October twenty-four, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? I would just like to say, I think that's a very positive change, and so I'm glad that, um, somebody was thinking and decided to do that, because that encourages our paraprofessionals to stick around and to, you know...
It also separates us from other school districts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we're still competing for the same people.
Yes, yes, and I think that's, that's great. All right, um, if there's no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, which is personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening. Uh, before you, you have schedules A, resignations, schedule B, uh, certificated staff, schedule C, support staff, schedule D, supplementals, and schedule E, leaves, uh, for your approval.
I'd like to make, should I make a motion?
Yes, yes, I just give a motion.
Uh, we'll go ahead and, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Okay, Board, are there any questions for discussion?
Sure, I, I, this was one I had spoken to Mr. Smith a little bit, the schedules, uh, D, when it talked about the different supplementals. And I thought it was really important that our community know the investment that we put, um, uh, in the opportunities for our children and our students to grow and learn, um, in addition to coming to school and being in the classroom. But like we saw in our presentation, um, about the Warrior Broadcast, which was one of the things I asked the superintendent, so it was really exciting to see that in real, real works and see what, what we're, um, investing in. But I just wondered if, um, um, if you had any, uh, was there anything else you had any? There was a couple of them I didn't know what they were, so I wasn't sure. Uh, we learned what Warrior Broadcast Club was, but I was wondering what, um, um, the Warrior Sisters United, um, program, and also, uh, trying to think of ones that were different. It's kind of cute, you have a Rubik's Cube Club, which kind of was, um, was obvious to me.
Well, the Warrior Sisters Club is, um, a, sort of an intervention or a, a club for girls that have been identified either by a teacher or counselor, or I guess from time to time could self-select and opt in. But it's where they're basically mentored by positive female role models. And that's who is sponsoring the club, and they, they do all kinds of, um, you know, empa- female empowerment kinds of activities with the young ladies.
Sure.
Yep.
And we'll look forward to our hundred and twelve different...
We'll start with this group right here.
I was saying that, I'm like, I can't wait.
But you, and one of the things that you'll find, when you hear what, what these people do in these clubs, you will absolutely be amazed. The other good part is the Board has the opportunity to see the clubs in real time. You can come and see them in action to see what they do. And the salary rate that we have to the right does not really do justice to what the people do. They go beyond the scope, but that's within our scope and our budget.
And just so that our community knows, the investment is nominal, and these folks are working really hard for, uh, their pay schedule, which is relatively nominal compared to what they're, what we're getting out of it as a community and a district. So I thought it was really important that community knows where their tax dollars go and how they're funding. And, um, I think those are really important pieces any time of the year, so.
And keeping young people in, involved and interested in school from a variety of aspects.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Kuhn, for those questions. Are there any other questions for discussion?
I don't see it.
Oh, yeah, you should, you should. That's very important.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, I just wanted to draw your attention to, on schedule D, at the bottom, very bottom, uh, in bold, a ten dollar per extra route cooperation stipend for bus drivers and bus aides. And so we, um, we are adding that, um, to incentivize cooperation where drivers are having to cover routes that are not uncovered, that are not, we're not able to have coverage for either because of absences or just due to driver shortages. And so what we're trying to do is respect their time and effort, um, because even though they're on the clock uh, for part of this time, it is very draining the afterday to have to cover someone else's duties. And so, um, for those drivers that voluntarily say, I'll, you know, give me more, give me more, like Mr. Gibson who left earlier, he's one of the ones. He, um, you know, often doesn't get home until six thirty. He'll start his day at six and get home six thirty, seven o'clock at night, because he's covering routes for colleagues, uh, to make sure that kids get home safely. So we're trying to incentivize that in order to make up for the driver shortage and attendance issues.
Yeah, I know Ms. Kuhn sent me an email wanting to know, and I'm glad we're doing it live on Waycross. What kinds of things are we doing to try to deal with our bus shortage and our bus issue? And this is one of those things. Uh, especially, the other part is putting in the call center. Uh, the call center is working. Parents, you know, it's still going to be a delay, but the parents are saying, I really appreciate the call center, because I talk to a real person as opposed to just some automated thing. And it just kind of reassures them that their kid will get home safe, um, before, you know, it's too late.
Sure.
Yeah.
Speaking of the call center, I think there are, we've added a couple of names to the call center.
They're on that list.
Yeah, so.
Can they do that on a rotating kind of basis? All ten of them don't work at the same time, or...
Yeah, they're not all working at the same times. We have some regulars and then some people that work, um, when they're available.
Yeah, so I get a, I get a call, I get a text, uh, from Mr. Denny every morning. When I see his name pop up, I try to close my eyes. But I get a call, a text, and he tells me how many drivers are out. That's an automatic how many people we need in the call center. It just kind of balances it, yes, absolutely. It's not accidental, it's very strategic.
Okay.
And I would like to thank, there are several people that have really worked to make this happen. Of course, human resources and, uh, the business office, as well as the tech department and everybody in between. They've really made the call center, uh, something very positive. We don't have as many agitated parents, uh, when you can actually talk to a reasonable person, any idea when my child will get home.
Where is the call center located at?
So employees work from, remotely from their workstation. So let's say if you get out, if you're a middle school secretary and you, um, get off at seven, what, twenty-five-ish? You're able to assist, um, right away. So they just sit at their desk, and the tech department has routed calls to a, um, a, a number, and anyone can answer it. And that way, a parent's, one of the biggest complaints we were getting is that no one was answering the phone. And it wasn't because we didn't want to, it was because they were fielding other calls. So now someone is constantly answering their call.
And it's sort of like the LaRosa's deal. I mean, you don't know where that secret call center is, so you want to kind of keep it a secret so that you really, but it works.
No, I thought it was really good that we were efficient on where our personnel was at, and we're taking maximum, um, use...
And they had specific training. There were people who wanted to do it, but we kind of checked their personality, and you're not quite ready for the call center yet. It had to be someone who can be pleasant and understanding to a per- a parent who's saying, where is my child?
Sure.
Well, and I think that that's a really great point, because when somebody is worried about where their child is on the bus, they're not always as polite as they might need to be. And we need to be, have somebody who's answering that call, who puts that extra effort in to be more polite. You know, and go that extra, and calm, you know? And de-escalate, you know, anything that would be going on. So I think that that's a really good observation, that you were able to, you know, look at and feel that, so. If there aren't any other questions, uh, concerning the, uh, personnel schedules, I'm gonna ask Mr. Seymour to call the vote.
I will, I want to kind of...
Okay, yes, please go ahead.
Can you advertise that out to all the parents about the call center? And, and we can hot, you know, kind of, not to their own horn, but at least show the strategicness of where we're, uh, what we're doing to address the problem, and, um, we're always figuring out a way to make it better. I think that would be a really good communication piece.
Yeah, I think Ms. Jackson put it in the, uh, newspaper that's comparable to the New York Times, the, uh, what is it called? Green Hill Press? Same, same, same volume, people read that.
Wow, probably.
The nice thing is that anyone that calls transportation after a certain hour, their call is immediately routed to the call center. So it's not like a separate website or a separate phone number that you have to kind of look for. It's like if you call transportation, um, after, I think, what, three o'clock or three thirty, um, you're gonna automatically be routed to the call center.
Again, we figured out, the people that are at LaRosa's that are making the pizzas, they're not taking the calls. So they're two separate entities, and we figured it out quick.
Sure.
Good call.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh four, which is a resolution for the American Education Week for November the fourteenth through the eighteenth. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Dr. Johnson, is it your sinuses, or are you getting emotional with this resolution?
I'm getting emotional, it's all, it's so part of the package.
So I'm gonna go back and, I'm sure you'd like to read this, but I saw you start tearing up down there, that just kind of concerned me. Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, all right.
I'll manage. Are you ready for me to read?
Yes, I am ready.
Okay, I'm going to read the American Education Week proclamation, and it is very dear to my heart. So, whereas the American Education Week was first observed in December nineteen twenty-one as an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of our public schools and to acknowledge the importance of community support for public education. And whereas teachers, administrators, education professionals, and educational support staff working at local, regional, and state levels serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas the strength, vitality, and freedom of our nation depends on citizens who are dedicated to the education of the next generation through the common school, which welcomes all children and strives to educate them to the highest potential. And whereas partnerships among public schools and their communities help build and support for public education that will sustain this vital institution through its many challenges in educating our children. And whereas the Winton Woods City School District Board of Education will ensure quality education for all children that will provide them with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values and freedom, civility, and equality. Be it therefore resolved that on this day, October the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, that American Education Week shall be a time to focus attention on the importance of the public school, its students, and its staff. Excuse me. The Winton Woods City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims November the fourteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, as American Education Week. Thank you. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the American Education Week, November fourteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. No discussion? Mr. Smith, Mr. Seymour, I'm sorry, would you call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh five, which is the resolution for International Education Week. Mr. Smith?
You know, this is, this is a really interesting resolution, simply because we talk about the, the thirty-two languages spoken in the district, and we have international students from all over the co- all over the world. And I think this resolution is very important, because I think it helps them to identify that we understand their needs and we work diligently to meet their needs.
And I'll be reading it.
Thank you.
Resolution, International Education Week, November fourteenth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. Whereas the week of November fourteenth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-two is International Education Week, and whereas we as a nation are charged with broadening our focus and becoming engaged in building international relationships, and whereas we should expand our efforts to learn from other countries about techniques and practices that will help us improve our own system of education, and whereas we should provide leadership and educational issues in appropriate international forums and collaborative, collaboratively work on initiatives of common benefit, and whereas it is appropriate to educate and encourage students to learn other languages, cultures, and challenges outside of our nation's borders. Therefore, be it resolved that Winton Woods City Schools Board of Education formally promotes and supports international awareness and the importance of teaching our students international education skills. Adopted this twenty-fourth day of October twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve International Education Week, the weekend November fourteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. With no discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh six, which is the addendum to Ohio Association of School Employees Contract. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, we could have Ms. Wilson or Ms. Shonda Gordon come and talk about the importance of why this is part of, uh, our conversation for tonight. The OPEC, Associate School Employees, the tuition reimbursement, I think we talked about it a little bit, but, you know, are there any other elaborate parts that you'd like to bring up to the Board?
Well, we agree, we did agree to it, um, some time ago, OPEC and, uh, and management.
Mm-hmm.
All agreed it was a good idea, and it was a great way to grow our own. A lot of the professionals that work with our young students are our coaches already or parent coaches, and I'm just gonna be making another credit or two, and working with their teacher certification. So it's a great way to diversify our workforce and to get people that are already kind of, um, into the classroom. You know, I, I, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little OPEC involved. There's nothing to be in the classroom, and we're not, um, and...
Ms. Gordon?
I agree with Ms. Wilson's say.
Okay.
Okay, Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to the Ohio Association of School Employees for tuition reimbursement as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, Board, are there any, um, the motion's been seconded, any discussion?
And the reimburse, or the potential, the pool of money is ten thousand dollars? That's correct. And is that separate from the other, or is it just one pool of money for overall, for all the, um...
Uh, ten thousand for OPEC, ten thousand for administrative.
Okay.
And just out of curiosity today, how many employees have taken advantage, or will, do you think will take advantage of this benefit?
I would say at least, what, fifteen?
What?
About fifteen people so far.
That's great. That's really good, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one, which is the Board of Education reports in the legislative report. Mrs. Kuhn, do you have information you'd like to share with us?
Sure, thank you. Um, I've passed out a little bit of some information on the legislative report from the, um, Ohio School Board Association. Uh, they didn't really have a whole lot to report right before the election, but there were a couple points I thought that were worthy of our attention. Um, one was the Title Nine, um, and talking about banning discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. It was sent to, um, a resolution was sent to Executive Committee for further consideration. I just printed it out, just so you would see what the, the, um, resolution stated. It's not anything, it's not progressed any further than the committee, but I thought that was really important, just to stay abreast with what's going on in that area. Um, there was an important piece I thought was following COVID, and I think they did some studies about the third grade guarantee and the provision that mandates that a third grader has to be kept back if they don't meet, um, the language arts assessment. And they felt, I think there were studies that were shown that that really didn't accomplish the goal, what it was intended to do. And there's going to be a provision, uh, they're gonna ask the General Assembly to repeal this piece of the, that provision of the, um, third grade guarantee. I think it's really, like you said, it's important to have a third grade guarantee and make sure our students are where they need to be, because you do learn to read the third grade, and then after that, you read to learn. So, but I think it's important that we don't punish or, or harm students, uh, by holding them back if with such a harsh mandate that's so rigid. So I thought that was important. And then one other piece too that ties in with the program, uh, talking about this, the report cards. Um, the report cards changed to a, a different coding of stars versus numbers or letters or whatever kind of standard... or whatever kind of standard that you want to do. And of course, coming out of COVID is an interesting time too because these children, um, did have a lot of challenges, just like we all did in life. So I think the report card, it gives us a little bit of a reprieve, and I know the superintendent can touch a little bit more on that. Um, it's still, we want to still have our baseline and we want to see where our students are. So I think it's important that the public is aware of that assessment or that review of the report cards as they stand right now, October twenty-sixth. I wonder if that might be broadcast too. I don't know if any of our students, I know it's, um, it might be helpful to have if, if our community would want to see it. It's just an idea. I, I don't know what the feasibility could be. Um, but if you want to weigh in a little bit more, I know you had some thoughts.
Well, the one thing, when you, you go back to the third grade guarantee, the, uh, people who testified, they, their testimony was really based on, you're actually increasing the dropout. You're increasing dropout for young people. Because once you get the kid into fifth grade and he's older and taller than his peers, he struggles. He struggles academically. Uh, and then we didn't really have the, uh, many, most districts, when the kid actually, when the child actually barely met the standards, we really should be working with him, but there were so many kids struggling in the pipeline, you couldn't even give him any more support. Then he just struggled in subsequent years. So I'm happy that they're not making it so harsh. But our teachers are working diligently and they take it seriously. They want, I mean, they take pride in the whole thing about young people moving to the next level and they want to make sure they give the support. That's why the summer program was so incredible and you saw the results of the summer program.
Yes.
Summer school.
I didn't see them. You'll have to send them to me again.
They were, they were publicized.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Um, the next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
I did send out an email with the, uh, normal documents, the CEO report, the board highlights document, um, the legislative, the ACTE report, and a diversity report, as well as, uh, Mr. Harry Snyder, the CEO, his, uh, his update on what's going on with the campuses. Um, wanted to just touch on the student spotlight report. Uh, I did include both September and October in my email since I failed to send Sep- September last month. Um, and want to just hi- highlight a couple of the students that were there. Uh, Luis Chinchilla Carrillo, um, he's in the Scarlet Oaks Diesel Program and he has a job placement at Hogan Transport. Um, Deandre Massey is a Scarlet Oaks Construction Framing and Finishing Program and he has placement at Baker Construction Company. And then we had, um, Archana Thappa in the Scarlet Oaks Health Technology Program and she placed second overall in a field meet for J R O T C, so. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is, um, twelve point oh one, which is Board Motion Recommendations and the Appointment to the Great Oaks Governing Board. Board, a motion would be in order to appoint the, to the Great Oaks Governing Board.
I'm sorry about that. So let me just clarify, so this is a motion to appoint Mr. Birdy, okay?
Yes, it's twelve point oh one.
So I make a motion to, um, to appoint Mr. Birdy as a representative from Witten Woods City Schools District to the Great Oaks Career Campus Governing Board.
I'll second.
And that is for January of twenty twenty-three through December of twenty twenty-five.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Just to be clear.
All right, thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Um, seeing there are known other nominations, um, Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Mr. Birdy, I would like to thank you for continuing to serve on the, uh, Great Oaks Governing Board for Witten Woods City School District for the next calendar year and, um,
I appreciate it.
We appreciate your updates and the information that you share with us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is thirteen point oh one, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer. Um, Mrs. Bryant, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I do. I want to say congratulations to all those who are honored here tonight and to our, um, Kiwanis Character Award winners as a former key club and builders club and junior high builder club and high school key club is really near and dear to my heart. So I'm glad to see that students are so interested in, in those characteristics and that we have a district that supports that type of growth and opportunity and celebrates the students. I also want to thank, um, our bus driver who has, I almost teared up just hearing the story of him not only fighting for the country, but then still giving back to the community as a coach and as a, a bus driver, so thank you. Um, if you have friends, send them, we need more bus drivers. Um, but thank you again for showing up and being there for our students. Also wanted to, um, thank our public, our person that had a comment about the district report card. Just to reiterate what Ms. Kuhn said, the report card says you are starting, we're not actually gonna get a grade for this year. As we know, across the country, students struggle with COVID and what COVID did to our education system. So we are committed to making sure that all students learn the best way they learn and that we can have every student graduate and graduate reading at the state levels, reading above the levels and continue what we're starting here. We're not a perfect district by any stretch of the imagination. But we are listening and we appreciate the feedback and just know that we're going to get there. Um, parents, please keep showing up. Please make sure that you go out and vote. Please attend when we have programs and activities and show up to talk about what you want to talk about here to the board. We are listening to you. We like to see you. And again, congratulations to the Warriors, um, for their season. I laughed in the last four minutes because we were winning in the four minutes and there was a score, one score. But congratulations to all of our athletes. Thank you again, parents, for allowing your students to be a part of our school district and go Warriors.
That's very good. Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Mrs. Kuhn?
Um, again, those wonderful sentiments, I totally appreciate. I think the board echoes those kind of feelings very much. Um, and, and as far as talking about parents, I did attend a PTA meeting last week on Wednesday, so it was very exciting. I think there were about twenty to twenty-five parents that came. I think, again, and not to harp on COVID, I wanted to go away, but we have to rebuild and regrow and for a long time, you know, not only students couldn't come in, but parents weren't allowed into the buildings. So we have to have our parents back into the buildings. We need their commitment, their support, um, the Parent Teacher Association. Um, I will send, I asked for some other copies if my board members want to join the PTA with me. Um, it's a nominal fee, it's only seven dollars, um, get some other perks apparently too. But, um, so that's really, really important. And then there are other parent groups, like the Performing Arts Boosters at the high school level, and I think they're looking for some parents to help, or anyone that's qualified that would like to work in a concession stand. Um, doesn't pay as well as the tickets, but since it's a volunteer position, but it's, no, it doesn't pay any. Just with a good feeling. Um, but it is a great way to give back to the community and to, uh, you don't have to pay to get in if you work in the concession stand. I don't know if that helps, but, um, those are really important things. And the other thing that the board, I think, is really important, that we should educate our community what goes on as a board with finances, with education, we try to make it as transparent as possible so the community can engage and join in and, and know that their tax dollars are spent wisely and as efficiently. And that's a real, like, uh, key point I know that I share with my, um, board members and with the treasurer and superintendent. Um, that's really, our goal is education, not only for our students, but for our community too. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Mr. Birdy?
I was gonna say, whatever Ms. Bryant and Ms. Kuhn said, for the most part, I'll try to make this, this fast. It just, Ms. Holler and that Warrior Broadcasting Crew Program is, is phenomenal and I'm looking forward to seeing more things like that. Her enthusiasm for it is, is evident. So that's, that's great for the kids. And then, uh, Mr. Gibson, the bus driver who was, who was honored here, we really, nobody, we don't get to say it enough. We really do appreciate those people that do that work for us and not just him, but everybody that's involved in that process because it's a stressful deal going on right now with the staff shortages and everything. So thank you to them, thank you to the teachers, the staff, administrators, and anybody involved with taking care of our children, and go Warriors.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Seymour?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'm just excited about the, uh, call center. Um, it's taken a lot of stress off of the, uh, the transportation department and, um, I think now when parents are calling, it's their familiar voice. They recognize you, okay, I know you're gonna take care of my child and there we go. So we couldn't figure out, we don't have it figured out about as far as the shortage of drivers, but we went to the next plan because we never give up. Whatever we come up with, whatever obstacles come in our way, we figure out another way to get it done. So.
And I applied as a volunteer in the call center and Mr. Smith said I didn't have the right personality. So I won't be answering the phone.
What I said, what I said was, he has the personality for the LaRosa's call center.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, thank you. Couldn't help it, that's right.
Oh, the other thing is the, uh, checking grades with athletes because you know, you go into the second quarter, into the playoffs. All of the kids, flags, cheerleaders, football, everybody is academically eligible and we're very excited about that.
Phenomenal.
You know, that changes the course in some school districts. They some put into much emphasis on the athletics and not enough on the academics.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for that statement.
And, um, I'll just echo that sentiment and say, I remember when we discussed first to move it to like a two point oh or one point five, you know, uh, there were parents that were breathing down our throats saying, it can't be done. And not only can it be done, it has been done and, um, the students have risen to the challenge of, you know, being able to excel at that point.
Excuse me, Doc, one more, one more thing. I, I know that I, um, given a lot of kudos to Mr. McGowan when he was on the school board, but he said, I'm not just a handsome face at games, I'm a handsome face at board meetings too. So thank you for coming tonight.
We do want to welcome the previous board member sitting in the office today.
You look happier for some reason, I don't know what that's about.
He does look very excited to be here.
But he follows the Warriors all the way through.
Yes.
And, um, I know that he no longer supports Priscilla, well, I won't say.
Whatever that other school was, we don't even know. We don't even, it's, it's, it's all good, it's all good.
I won't say it over there. There you go.
Yes, yes, winwoods. All right, um, I just want to echo the sentiments of every, of, of all of my colleagues, um, uh, into Coach Murphy who had, um, you know, uh, my sentiments and, um, uh, for condolences to him and he still coached that team, you know, to a, a significant win, not a little win, it was a big win. So, um, and I, I'm excited to hear more, uh, from the supplementals because I do believe, I was always a supplemental, um, person. I did junior achievement and I did, you know, uh, after school with, um, you know, the ladies, the young ladies and like that. So I know that it takes a certain personality, a certain kind of energy, and I know that people do that kind of work out of the passion for what they're doing. It's not about the pay. It, it's nice that you give them a little gas money to get where they're going.
Yeah.
But really, it's more about, you know, influencing the people that they're working with. And I think that, um, Mrs. Holler hit the nail on the head. I love her energy, by the way. Um, hit the nail on the head when she said, um, about, um, that this could be them looking into their future and deciding that this might be where they want to, you know, work in, 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 uh, in the future or get into, in her case, broadcasting. But in all of these different supplementals, um, I can remember, uh, this is a shout out to Mr. Denny, when he did a math, uh, thing back when my oldest daughter, well, next oldest daughter was in school and she was not good in math, but he made her love math. And it was because of his energy and his love for what he was doing, that little after-school thing that he did that made her love math. So I know that the, I'm eager to hear about the supplementals because as an educator, that's why we do what we do. It really is why we do what we do. And, uh, uh, we can't pick who, what students are in the seats, but the students that are in the seats, we're gonna do our level best to educate them to the, the, their highest potential. So, and that's the only thing we can do is to responsibly do that. So I'm gonna end with that. Uh, congratulations to the, uh, football team for an undefeated season. That is a huge challenge. Now, you still gotta keep playing till we get to the road to, you know, all the way, another championship. That would be wonderful.
And we have a home game.
Yes, we do have another one. So, um, excited about that, yes.
I did want to mention something because we forgot to mention the band being in Blink.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
And so I was out of town and get this video from my daughter, like, look, and I'm like, is that?
They were awesome. I was there.
And so I hate that I missed it, but it was such a prideful moment to just to go, ah, that's Witten Woods. And from what I hear, I'm doing, I'm just saying, we were the best band.
Well, I sent that report out and it, it's true.
So congratulations.
We're not biased at all to say that we were the best band there.
But they've showcased, they've showcased the city several times this year and they've all, they've come out being the best in, in, in every time. So it's good having that great football team, but that other support behind you and the flags and cheerleaders, it just makes it that much, much better. So.
It's, it's, it's the total package. So you're absolutely right. Thank you, Mrs. Bryant, for bringing that up. Um, Board, there is a need for an executive session, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance and to negotiate with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Um, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Was that Mrs. Kuhn? Sorry.
Yes, it was, yes.
We gotta change.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, thank you. We will not take any further action when we come out of executive session this evening. Therefore, I will sincerely thank the, uh, Waycross, uh, community for your service in taping tonight's, uh, regular board meeting. And with that said, I'll call these, this meeting of the Witten Woods City School Board of Education, uh, regular meeting for Monday, October the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself, each other, stay safe, healthy, and well.
Thank you.
Thank you.